This is a work session of the Board of Education. Can we all see and share the schedule of the meeting?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. You have the agenda before you. I believe we're going to make a couple of changes if everyone agrees. First, yesterday was a big day for us with New Lebanon. I think we're going to have a short update from Mr. Bernstein about items related to that. The second one is, the superintendent was going to give us a quick update on the status of practices at the high school and the plan to deal with that for the rest of the season. And then any help we might be able to offer her in the event she needs it. The other change that is proposed is to swap in order of new course proposals. We go first in the interest of all the staff that is here, and we can dispose of that, and then we can move on to the MOL report. So those are the changes. I move those changes as proposed. Ms. Reiman, others in favor? Seven zero. Now, can I have a motion to accept the agenda as... I'm sorry. Is there any other modifications anybody else wants to make? No. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda as... Ms. Dayton, others in favor? Seven zero. Okay, so we'll go to our first item, which is New Lebanon. Mr. Bernstein?
So, thank you. Yes, was a very big week for New Lebanon. The governor signed the state budget. Sorry, Michael Woods here, and I'm not looking at you. The governor signed the state budget, and yesterday afternoon at 5:00, the EBT met and voted to release the conditions. What that now means going forward is tomorrow morning, the New Lebanon Building Committee will be meeting at 8:00 a.m. We are doing our final review of the contract with the contractor. They are a contractor at risk. Once we do that, the project is then going to move forward. I know everybody's interested in the timing, so let me give you a sense of what's going to happen. Real work will start in earnest probably within a week or so of signing the contract, but you probably won't notice too much happening on the grounds until after Thanksgiving. To gear up for two or three days before Thanksgiving doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But site work, including putting fences up and demarcation, will happen starting the 27th. Fencing probably will go up that first week in December, and from there, we'll just be moving forward. The idea is to have a 13-month schedule, which is really aggressive, and basically get an occupancy certificate, a temporary one issued before Christmas of 2018. Given that it takes some time to get into the building, the possibility of getting in before we come back from break in that January or on New Year's might be tight, so we may be looking at February break of 2019. And then after that, Phase Two will be the site development work, which will actually happen after the school year ends, and the full, complete site will be done and finished right before school starts. So that's what we're looking at. I'm pretty excited. We've actually met the new Gilbane staff, including a person that lives in Greenwich, so they've got people that will be here on the ground early. And then Carrie Kratz, who's our main point of contact, will be here at least once a week, and we'll still have the building committee meeting. So we're excited, we're moving forward. We're on budget, and I wish I could say we were on time.
Questions, Mr. Bernstein? Bright new day. With that, I think we're going to get an update from the superintendent on fall practices, particularly for sports at the high school, particularly those halftime outdoors.
All right, so right now, our soccer team is on their way for conference finals. They're maybe the conference champs. I'm so excited for them. So they are on the way, and hopefully we'll have a great night tonight. All right, so without lit fields, so without lights, our fall field use is rolling out according to plan and as anticipated for September through November of 2017, including the early releases, off-site practices and games, and our timing for needing the lights, which is rolling out as we thought. This is the time of year. So the great news is our games have been played, our athletic program has run this fall even without the gymnasium. And while at the beginning of...
There is great news about that, too.
There is great news about that, that gym's finished and beautiful. And while we didn't have a full number of athletic buses earlier this season, we still did not cancel any games. So there's a lot of good news, you know, a mix. Sometimes we hear the things that didn't go well, but a lot of things have gone very well, and some really incredible results with our athletes this season. Let's see, we did have some heavy traffic, heavier than normal, but the really interesting thing is we're hearing that from commuters, not just school buses and not just athletic-related, but that's happening in the area, so it's a reality. We do anticipate some early releases for students will continue in the winter with likely dismissals at 2:00 p.m. for some sports like skiing and bowling, which again is as anticipated. Next year, our local athletic conferences, though, are telling us that their start time for games will be 4:00 p.m., so it's something we need to be aware of. With regard to regular practices, this week, football is on schedule to be just fine, October 30th to November 3rd. Next week is also fine. We have Election Day off of school, so there's an earlier game. They have a game at Danbury. Things are looking fine. It's the weeks after that that we're needing some lit fields. That is the... It's really the week before Thanksgiving that we're starting to need help with lights. So we're looking for lights basically about two days a week to get through the remainder of the season and postseason play. We are talking about all kinds of options and alternatives, like practicing even in the gym if needed, but that's of course before wrestling and basketball. And you know, you don't picture the pads and the helmets or anything, but just the fact that they can walk through, just like they would do on an inclement day. So we can do some of that. We may also be having practices on weekends, which is not that uncommon either that happens, so you use some daylight that way. As we get to later in the season, the practices do compress, they get a little shorter. That's common, so those are some things that we're doing. We do have some potential off-site locations for a couple of days here and there for... in a local, like a Stanford location, so we are looking at that and trying to finalize that contract. So we may transport students to another school for some combined practices. That's also in the works. So as... Those are the things that we've been doing. We do have some options that have been considered and have not been permitted or allowable either through the contract restrictions of the site or just people being unable to rent. So we can run into some of that through our checking. Our field hockey is deciding to just compress their practices a bit, but they're moving right along as well. So that is the update of what we're trying and what we're doing.
Dr. Gilde, can you just give a little bit more clarity on some of the options that are off the table?
Right, so some of the things that have been tried are different private and public school sites, as well as that purchase college agreement, which we tried. The indemnification rules just did not work, so we were unable to meet both sides. We're unable to come to an agreement on that contract. Many of the private schools don't have lit fields either, so even contacting privates does not help too much. We do have a couple of school districts that have said off-season, depending on their results, that we could call them back, and so that is still something that is being pursued for postseason practice. There's a couple of them, and they're local.
Never thought we'd be praying for somebody else.
No, and it's not that we want to ever do that, but that's why we make the kind of wishers, so...
Yeah, it's nice, but you know, other people, we don't wish the bill.
Yeah, no, but that's something that we're still pursuing. So those are some of the kinds of things. We've talked about AM and PM splitting practice, Lauren. That's another idea that we had, where the kids might do a brief walk-through in the morning and then, you know, stay after and do more of the changing later. Not ideal, not ideal. And of course, the coach always prefers artificial turf, just based on the weather. If something rains, you know, we could rent an outside field, potentially have a bunch of rainy days and not be able to use them. So it's, you know, all of those things are being considered, and the teams and the coaches are working within the parameters that we've set for them, and they're really trying to make the best of that. So we're hoping for lights in the long term, though I think that's the goal.
Joe, can I ask two questions? One is, I know that we were less than ideal, but an alternate option we were pursuing was looking at Central Middle School and putting in temporary lights. I know that that has been wandering its way through 2017. What's the next time that's going to come up?
So we sent... Submitted all the responses that we had available to all the questions that were asked by planning and zoning, so those have been submitted. We did not get a hold of that 2002 document, so that's one that I couldn't answer yet. So the 2002 document, I'm not sure where to find it, but we'll keep looking. It's a State Routes to School document. I think that's kind of a national movement. I'm familiar with the movement, I just haven't seen our particular document, and I'm not sure how the high school kids being picked up links to that, but that's okay, we'll keep looking for that. But everything else that we had available, we submitted. Their next meeting is November 9th, and they said as long as we have those things into them that they would be considered. So we will be looking at that as well. That was meant more for a different team, it was a different athletic team, and so we were really looking ahead almost to spring for that particular solution. It would have been great if we could have gotten it for the fall, but we understood even when we applied, it might be a spring solution. And again, we're going to run into the weather and the potential use of that field in inclement weather.
Okay. And one other question that I had is, is... I know you've been working, we've been working, looking at all of your options relating to lights at Greenwich High School. I know we're severely restricted there because of the prior agreement with the neighbor. There have been some suggestions made about doing things kind of on a quicker, offensive basis, which is complicated. Is there any support that you need from the board to continue to pursue those kind of outside the... Pursue those options even though they're remote as they may be?
Right, so we do believe that ongoing conversation and negotiations with, within that stipulated agreement, would be valuable and would be very helpful, and we would be really just asking for practice lights for specific dates. So that's really all we're asking for in that, so it would be a request to add practice dates so that we could keep the kids right at our own high school site, because obviously that's ideal to not have to do as much travel time to and from other places. So that would be an ask, and we actually have some of that in process, because on November 13th, we would like to meet with the neighbors around the high school to talk with them about both short and long-term plans, so that would be part of that meeting that we did want to make sure got announced. So November 13th, a neighbors' meeting to talk about the kinds of practices we would like, and obviously, as we look at long-term for the field, once we improve those lights, it's going to be a much probably easier decision for people when they know they're not going to have glare, because improved lighting obviously does not have the off-the-field corn cob effect that we may, you know, we currently have. And then, long-term, you know, we do need to pursue the means of accessing that, you know, town-wide, we need some lights town-wide, but we certainly obviously love to see the fields used to their full advantage, to have a comprehensive high school program with a lot of championship teams that are doing excellent things, so to try to cut down their travel time is always going to be a good decision for kids, and we always want to make the best decisions for the safety, health, well-being of our children.
Is there anything you need from us to support moving that forward right now? So as an example, is there any support we need from the town? Is there any support we need from a legal department? Is there any support we need from anybody to help, you know, pursue that or any of these other options? I know you said as an example, on looking at other sites, indemnification became a big... Apparently, the town's requirements for full indemnification became an impediment to making an arrangement to sue the purchase, as an example. Are there any of those that you need our help with?
I think if we keep those lines of communication open, that's the best. Excuse me. We do have a meeting planned for Monday with town officials and district officials to be starting to look at some of those things together. So I will keep the board posted if I need your additional support.
After Monday?
After Monday.
And just out of curiosity, that's a group, but do you know it's the law department will be there, too?
I do believe that way you will be.
Okay, so that should be helpful, maybe that'll be helpful. Okay, anything else on this? Lauren, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just seeing other examples. Well, do we go to Ms. Dayton, or can we go to Ms. Erickson?
This is very easy and quick. The lights that were chosen for Central Middle Field, do they need to be changed and swapped out for a different type of lighting based on feedback at P&amp;Z?
The long-term solution, we would obviously have a different kind of light, because you wouldn't have one that you plug in, right? You wouldn't have a generator-based light, so that's one thing. So we're going to tell you all understand that rental is going to be different than a long-term solution, and we did... There are actually certain ones that are better or not as good, but certainly with lighting, technology's improving, ideally, you would always want an LED that's just not available in rental at this point, so we've looked at all of that. It is testicle, and they do understand what things we are looking at, and we do have a plug-in option, which they have requested, so we've got that.
Ms. Erickson?
So just so I understand, the meeting on the 13th has been scheduled with the neighbors?
We are in the process of doing that, yes. So this was the first announcement of that, and then there will be a follow-up letter that goes formally announcing.
Will you expect experts there on the lighting to...
We have, yes. Yes, lighting has confirmed and architect has confirmed.
So is that being done in one big group, or is that being done separately? Because I knew there were different neighbors with different concerns based upon where they lived.
I'm not thinking...
Or potential concerns, they have it all.
I think one meeting is simply the information and seeking almost like a note card, questions and information, but then I do think we're going to see follow-up small group meetings that address the specific topic, topic like chat, which is different than using the fields. But the big meeting is what's going to start.
Is that... Do we have a place and time for that planned yet or not yet?
We have planned at the high school, but I do not know if it's Student Center or Parent Kit.
Okay. Any more on this? Thank you very much for your input. Okay, with that, we're going to move on. First subject will be new course proposals for 2018-19. I believe it is Ms. Parisi and Dr. Winters, which is what it says. I'm sorry, yeah, because he's not on, we see him there. Oh, it's you. Oh, great. Are you joining, or?
Ishel.
We're through. Okay, new course proposals.
So, good evening. Dr. Winters is actually attending the ESL conference with Adrian Rich Klein, our ESL coordinator, so I said, "You go, I got this." So, good evening. In your board packet, you have new course proposals for 2018-19, high school course of study. We also present a recommendation to the board to consider with regard to Mandarin 7 at the middle school level. This course was originally presented in November of 2016, and from our conversation, we went back and did some more research, so we have that to share with you. We did receive a number of questions prior to this meeting. We've provided answers to each of those questions, and we now have uploaded it to Board Docs as an addendum to this report, but we can also address any additional questions this evening. Just as a reminder for process, all high school courses or course proposals are initially proposed by the teachers to meet the need of a group of students that they've identified in their content area. Courses are proposed around late February or early March to the High School Learning Planning Council, or LPC. The council engages in two reads with teacher leaders and administrators, and once accepted, the courses are then forwarded to the superintendent and myself. And after review, I then bring the courses to Curriculum Council, where the members provide input and questions to refine the proposal to the board, and Jennifer Dayton acts as our valued board liaison to that council, so we get that input as well prior to the courses coming to you. So I thought that would be helpful. The first course we do want to discuss is Mandarin 7, so I will ask Viviana O'Connor, our program coordinator for world language, to join me.
Welcome.
Thank you. As I mentioned, we had a very rigorous conversation last year, and we wanted to make sure that we were making the right decision with providing this course, so we did... We went back to the drawing board and engaged principals and teachers and students to explore the option, and Viviana actually spearheaded that, so I'm going to have her speak to the results.
So initially, we agreed to do a survey for grade seven, and due to the lack of interest in the course, I expanded it and included the grade six students, just to be very sure that this was what we wanted to do. After looking at the results, we have very limited, looking at the big picture in Ron, limited interest. Also, I considered, in conjunction with Irene, we considered the fiscal responsibility on the district, and it would be at this time not the right time to pursue. And when we presented all of this data to the administrators, we all felt that this time to just not pursue the Chinese course.
Do you want to share?
Would you like... We actually, six and seven, because we had a conversation last year about starting in seventh grade or in eighth grade, and so, you know, we only focused on one grade, but I took the initiative to just do both grades, just to be sure. I do have the numbers if you want to hear them. So for grade six, we surveyed 682 students, 186 responded across the district, and out of the 186, 98 students said they would not be interested. Therefore, that would be 53% would not be interested in pursuing Chinese as a second language or as a world language. And in grade seven, we surveyed 692 students, 234 responded, 63% were not interested in continuing with Chinese. That equals to 140 students across the district. So even when I looked at it individually, I don't think we would have even had a sample to run a course per school.
New sample.
I really appreciate the feedback and the ability to look at something and say, "You know what? We thought it was good and it wasn't." I'm just curious, did you survey the parents as well?
Yes, the survey wasn't conducted with the parents. So the survey went actually to parents and students, and in the survey, there was directions to confer with the student and parent and email that. And most were actually parent emails, replied back, oh bless you, with the student's name on it, so we were able to track that, yes.
So just looking at the high school, then, do you feel that if you start in any of the grades of the high school, that you have enough of a foundation in a language where you have five different tones, a different system of writing?
Both.
Can you get to the place where you're ready to pursue it in university if you choose to do so?
Our current curriculum allows that, yes. And looking at our AP scores, which is really the trap for continuing, 100% of our students in the last three years has scored a three or above in AP world language. So yes, I do feel we still have a good base.
Viviana, can I ask you a quick question? Just to put this in context?
Absolutely.
We obviously do early foreign language with Spanish, right? As you progress into the high school, just roughly, the percentages of kids who take which language?
I can get back to you on that.
I presume it's most... Number one is probably Spanish, right?
The majority of the students is Spanish. The second largest, I can tell you overall, on numbers, the largest one is Spanish, second to that is French, following that is Italian, following that is Chinese and German. Those two are kind of similar. Following that is ASL, and Latin would be the last one. And of the other languages, the lower ones, or the smaller ones, not lower, they're very close in enrollment.
This is kind of interesting that Chinese didn't quite emerge, or doesn't seem to have emerged in Greenwich as that, you know, they have a billion people, and they're growing like crazy, and there was a lot of talk about that emerging as one of the most dominant foreign languages taught to kids prefer in the U.S. It just didn't seem to work out quite that way yet, right?
Well, currently, since I was hired, that was five years ago, it seemed like yesterday, we had a full-time teacher and a very part-time, which I believe she taught one section. We're at a point where it has grown at the high school. We're at a full-time teacher, and the second teacher teaches three sections, and they're pretty full. So we have grown in the last years. It's just the interest has not transferred to the middle school, which is fine, which is...
Mr. Bernstein? Do you have a sense of the numbers for the Chinese program? And is it spread through four years? So do you know how it breaks down?
I can get that for you.
Yeah, just number of students taking it in enrollment, exactly. It might be interesting just to see that among all the...
I know it's in the monitor report, but I can give you an updated one. I'll get it for you.
Thank you. Other questions? Viviana, the language part of this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Are we going to move on? I presume we're going to move to the next course.
So the next course proposal for discussion is College Algebra and Trigonometry. And moving this evening is Dana Stalata, our program associate for math and housemaster at GHS, along with Lori Mulligan, math educator, and Sheila Sival, our STEM coordinator. We will get another chair on that one. I have the chair side.
She's not... Ms. O'Neal is not missing. It was planned that she was not going to be here. We just... Our wonderful staff set a place for her anyway. Excellent, thank you. Just so nobody thinks she's AOL. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So with Dana's leadership, this course has come through that LPC process I spoke to before, and so this team of three will be speaking to the rationale for this course and why it's needed at the high school. So can I start with you, Dana? That's okay.
So we are proposing the College Algebra and Trigonometry course because we believe we've identified a gap in our mathematical sequence. As you know, students typically take algebra and geometry, Algebra II and pre-calculus. We have students who, for whatever reason, may never get to see pre-calculus in high school, and we have a concern for that, and we feel that this course would help address that concern. I kind of want to highlight the kind of students that we feel this course would be suitable for. If you look on the front page, there's the course sequence chart that we have, and you'll notice that there are some sophomores who take Algebra II. And whether they take Algebra II-A as listed or our slightly lower-level course, Algebra II-B, there might be students that, for whatever reason, are not recommended to take pre-calculus the next year. So an Algebra II-A student should be able to go into pre-cal, but for some students, they find it challenging, and right now, they end up taking what's called discrete math. And we would like to offer this course for those students as a chance to kind of bridge the gap between Algebra II and pre-calculus, so that we strengthen their skills with any Algebra II foundational concepts that they're not strong enough yet been yet, while introducing some pre-cal topics, including obviously trigonometry. It is our hope that those students will be successful as juniors in this course, therefore ready to take pre-calculus as seniors who they start to choose. There's also students who take Algebra II-B, which may be taken as sophomores or juniors, and right now, they're not eligible to take pre-calculus. I've had in the past students who've had straight A pluses in Algebra II-B, and have tried to go into pre-cal, and they just are not able to handle it. So we feel strongly that we want to give those students as well the opportunity to take this course, with hope that the following year, they'll be able to take pre-calculus if they would like. Obviously, there's some students who might take this as juniors, they're... Sorry, take Algebra II as juniors, therefore as seniors would take this course, which our hope would be they would expose also to SAT questions, they'd be exposed to college entrance exam questions. So we're trying to be very thoughtful with the curriculum that would be within that course to support our students.
Okay, so that's one information question. You referred to discrete math. Is that the same as topics in math?
It is not. It is so discrete that it's not even on here. So what we're actually... What we're... Our hunch is, is that students would actually choose to take this course over discrete. The discrete course currently has some pre-calculus topics, not a lot, so that's why... It might not be obvious on your packet, but...
Would it be... Would discrete math be eliminated?
That is what we would predict.
This would replace that?
Correct.
We'd need to run this course to determine that.
Right.
I'm sorry, wait.
That's okay.
Questions? Mr. Bernstein?
I guess, I know you said there's no staffing change, but if you were to run both courses, would there be any staffing impact?
Yeah, so what we would predict, if you go to the second page, we've... I showed some numbers of students that we think. What you can't tell from this exactly is that these students, we would predict, might still choose to take or elected to take this class. still choose to take or elected to take this class. They could take them both together if they so choose. Or instead of the discrete class, they might take it. So I don't, currently this year, to be really concrete, we have four sections, sorry, we have two sections of discrete. And we have six sections of statistics. So I would say some of those students may have elected to take this course, who's already not. So I don't believe we need an increase in the staff number.
Other questions?
Ms. Ericson.
I support this. I think this does fill a gap for the high school. This is kind of a dumb question, but the name College Algebra and Trigonometry, is that really going to get kids to sign up for this, or is it going to scare some kids?
We actually, we talked about that. It's a great question. Because we don't currently have any course that has trigonometry in the title, we're hoping this would actually attract students who say, I've just completed Algebra II, I haven't seen any trig yet, I know I have to see it on my SATs. So we're hoping they see that versus the discrete math, which a lot of kids say, what is this course? It's...
It's more the college, college plus year.
Oh, I hear that point. I hope not. I think we would do our best to educate the students with the counselor's support about what this course is actually all about. Our classroom teachers would have the discussions with the students that they'd be recommending for this course, so we would make sure that it's very clear, but not to be scared by the title of college. I hear your concern.
Ms. Appleby.
Thank you, I also support this. I just want to verify, because I think you were already saying, so this course would actually help our students who end up having to take placement tests at their colleges, whether it's at Noah Community or a four-year college, as well as be able to handle certain math on the SAT. So we should be able to see a rise in scores and things as well from us.
I was going to say, anecdotally, some of the research that we had in this was talking to students who finished Algebra II and then took statistics and then had to take these placement tests that have no statistics on it, but things that they hadn't seen, you know, material that they haven't seen in over a year. So, you know, this would be a great benefit to the students to be in a class that not only continues the algebraic logic and gives some trigonometry, but also kind of points them in the direction as to what those kind of questions will look like when they are attending a college, make math placement exams.
More questions? Okay, we'll be voting on this next time we meet. So if you have any additional questions, listen to Dr. Goodway. Thank you very much for the hard work.
So the next course proposal for discussion is Civil War Reconstruction and Ancient Civilizations. And with me this evening is Lucy, Lucy Areco, sorry, our Program Associate for Social Studies as well as a housemaster, and many social studies teacher colleagues with us. I will ask them to come to the table, we'll get some more chairs, and you will share the course with them.
You want affordable mic? Don't give me him the mic.
Does this work?
Yes.
I close that to focus. That okay?
That works.
So yeah, I will ask Ms. Areco to speak to the course because she, again, worked with her teacher colleagues at the high school to bring it through the LPC process, so they're the expert.
So let me introduce the teachers that came tonight. Mike Altioda, Jessica Keller, Ian Tiedemann, and Karen Boyet. Karen and Mike authored the proposal for the Civil War and Reconstruction course. And Jessica and Ian put together the proposal for Ancient Civilizations. So sort of the reasons behind how we came to decide on these two courses are the same. Last year, we took sort of a hard look at our elective offerings and saw that we essentially had a hole in our history elective offerings. We have one non-AP history elective, modern European history. And we decided that we should pursue additional history electives to allow more choice in that area. So we came up with a list of what we thought were courses that we should offer, that we could offer all of them, if we could, but we did have to narrow them down. So we had several American history courses and several world history courses that we came up with. Then we surveyed the students and the teachers about interest essentially in these courses. And the two that sort of rose to the top were Ancient Civilizations and Civil War and Ancient Civilizations was a topic that was covered in middle school. However, the curriculum has recently changed and it is no longer covered in middle school. They actually might do a couple of days on democracy in Greece and Rome, but that is it, it is no longer in the middle school curriculum. So we did see that as something that we wanted to bring back at the high school level and a lot of students were interested in it. In terms of the Civil War and Reconstruction, that is taught in eighth grade in Greenwich, in 10th grade in our American history course, starts at the Gilded Age. That curriculum also changed recently. So the last time the kids do get the Civil War and Reconstruction is in eighth grade. So we thought as an elective, that would be a great place for a kid who was more interested in that period of time to take that course and explore it further.
Dr. Francis.
Any of you have anything else you'd like to add?
Is that something good to say? We're ready.
I actually had a broader question then about the specific courses, which is, you know, when I saw this, I'm like, oh, let me pull up Staples and kind of see what they have. And clearly, you know, they had more choices. Where do you imagine, because I saw in some of the answers to the questions, that some other ones might get added. Where would you like to see us in terms of numbers and sort of broader other areas that you might see as the next step if we're going to do that? So where would you like to aim longer term in terms of number of courses for electives and what types of things might be added?
Yes, Staples offers a lot of, I believe, regional studies courses, area studies courses. Two that came up that we would like to add in the future are Latin American Studies course, for instance, and possibly a Women's Studies course. So yes, we would like to expand those elective offerings so that other areas of the world are covered as well.
What percentage of our students take four years of history? And do you imagine that this might then expand the number of students doing this, as opposed to just, you know, shuffling from one to another? And I don't need an exact number, I'm just...
I actually have it. 87.2% do take four years. So hopefully, that number would expand.
Ms. Ericson.
First, I'd like to say a big hearty thank you. It's been many years now and he's now done and out of college. Boyet taught my son. And he actually took honors contemporary America when it existed as an elective course because there were no other history elective courses other than one or two APs. And one of them was AP Psych, which was not going, he did not consider a social science course in the history course in what he wanted to do. And so I applaud you because as much as STEM is really important, there are many students who really do enjoy the topic of history and we should have those opportunities too. Thank you.
Ms. Areco, I was, I wasn't sure I properly understood the paragraph, which I think goes a little bit to Dr. Francis's point, on the first page. It says, December 16, we surveyed, you pick two courses, which is what you guys said is kind of a parameter. And it said Empires of Ancient Civilization, Latin American Studies, Modern Middle Eastern, Middle East Studies were top load getters. I wasn't sure if it included, but then it's important. It said American Civil War, History of American Migration, Immigration, rather, and the founding of America were most popular. So, but then I'm looking at this list that's in this asterisk at the bottom. I probably should have gone and looked at the course catalog. Can you help me put that in context?
Sure.
Because I mean, this fits in context.
Yes.
Yeah.
The list at the bottom, those are our current offerings.
Right, that's what, okay.
At the top, we had more than one survey. So our initial survey basically had the list, and I can tell you what the full list was.
It's okay.
Okay. But it narrowed it down to three in each category, three world history and three American history. So then, those courses, we presented to the students and asked them, you know, which would interest you? And that's how we narrowed it down.
Okay. And I guess when we talk about Ancient Civilizations in a minute, right, what we're kind of talking about is that it's all maybe separate. So I have a lot more questions about Civil War and Reconstruction. That one makes sense to me. The other one, I've got some other questions. Ms. Appleby.
Just a general question, which we cover for both Civilization and the Civil War course. Both of those topics are sufficiently broad that I would suspect that it would allow for changes in the curriculum and changes in the topics that are covered, both connecting to world events that might be happening and/or just interest level of students, so that, you know, by approving the course, we're actually giving you a framework that you can adapt as you need to and make the course grow in the right way. Do you know?
I was just, if you needed more information regarding Ancient Civilizations, do you have some questions or not?
I do.
Do you have questions?
I do. But maybe we can just dispose of Civil War and Reconstruction first and then...
It's tangentially related. I do appreciate that it's important to get input from students, but they are transitory. And I hope we're thinking institutionally about what students need to know about the world. And I would hope that at a future date, when we have funding and opportunity, we would bring into either area studies or what you call one of your top three, Middle Eastern Studies. We need them to understand the Islamic world. And however that happens in the future, I'm not pushing forward at the present, but we've got to think about offering things they may not be currently interested in, that are important in our course catalog.
Well, the reason you have the Civil War is, I think it was sort of maybe swayed the student decision, but the Middle East is covered, modern Middle East is covered a lot in the American history class when it gets to 21st century. So that is covered in our scope and sequence where at this high school level, they really don't see Civil War or Reconstruction at all.
And just to add to that, in the AP Comparative Politics course, there is a unit on Iran as well, and US-Iranian relations are covered as well in that course, but it focuses on Iran.
Ian, do you want to mention Global Studies?
In Global Studies, we do units on Middle Eastern, not only Middle Eastern, but the region for ninth graders as well. So they do get it, but it's not the same as having a full course about it, but those students are served in multiple courses.
This is going to be hard for me. I'm going to go back to school and take these courses. This is, it's like, ooh, quiet. And I'll go home and torture my children and say, why don't you take my course? As a big dad. Okay, any more on that one? And I think you wanted us to ask questions, did we?
Yes, I do, you have questions.
Civilization? Ready? I had one question, I'm sure you're going to like step in it when I say this. Ancient civilizations, you were talking about where it's taught in the middle school grades and what they get and the curriculum change. You know, I was used to getting, you know, Ancient civilizations would be everything ancient, I guess, right? But you got it in eighth grade. So how did that change? Because I think you made that reference to how that changed. Because that would be, that would be everything, what, Mesopotamia, Egypt, through the Greece, Rome, I presume up to Rome, right? I don't know. And how did that one change it? Because it caught my attention when you said it changed in the curriculum and that the kids would see it again.
Right, as a result of the new national standards that were adopted a few years ago. And as a result of unpacking that and with the guidance from those national standards, we had to realign and consider that vertical articulation from where it begins, right? Let's say sixth grade, just looking at 612. And then a lot of shifts happened there as a result of the new standards. But it was done as a, 68 reviewed, and then there was 912. And then during the institute, we came together even as 612 to look at the articulation.
When you guys think of Western civilization, there's multiple pieces of it. Can you describe to me how you think of Western civilization and where kids get it and what part of it is mandatory and what part of it is elective? Because I'm looking at Ancient civilizations and I'm thinking Greece, Rome, I mean, that's like cornerstone of Western civilization, right?
They just don't get that in high school. They're not.
It's not a part of...
It's not. Our opening course in high school starts really in 1800s. So you can talk with the alignment, which is kind of really application of some old school ideas, but it's not the same as studying Ancient classics and foundations.
So the shift in the curriculum from middle school to more regional studies from ancient and then to high school, you're going to ninth grade and the 10th grade tomorrow, 20th and 21st century.
Are you asking why there's not more Western civilization, is that?
No, I reckon, yes. Yes, I am, but I'm recognizing that, you know, it's not some smooth continuum, right? It's a, kids get pieces as they move along, right? And I get that part. But then, when you, you know, you pull back from being at 300 feet to 10,000 feet, obviously you want to, I would like to see, or that's what I'm asking, is to the degree does a student walk away regardless of how they got it? To a, is it part of the full curriculum that they get, you know, deep understanding of Western civilization when they're done? From let's say essentially when they enter middle school at grade six and they leave at grade 12, is that a standard part of the curriculum is really the question, regardless of if they're getting it in pieces or they're getting it in an integrated way? That was what I was really trying to get to. Because this would obviously be a critical piece and it's deep, which is really great. But it's also, it's an elective.
Correct.
Right.
So that's if they were going to get it, they would have to take that class.
They have to deliberately go get it.
Correct.
And what caught my attention was you made that comment about...
The cheap?
Yeah. Because you would expect kids to really get most of that in middle school and then they could go deeper. And I realize I'm showing my age when I say this, but is there any, okay, I think you get the point. Is there anything on that list? No?
No.
Okay. Any, Dr. Francis?
I know I read this, but this is for this upcoming fall?
Yes.
Correct.
It's 18, it's 18, 19. Any other questions on this? Thank you very much for the hard, I'm sorry, Ms. Appleby.
Sort of thinking out loud and now thinking back to my own personal situation, the course... The courses as electives, from a workload standpoint and from a integration standpoint, for students doing AP Gov and comparative as well as some of the other AP history courses, would they be able to double up with these in a reasonable fashion for their schedules?
Yes, I think so. You know, I can just kind of casually mention the state of my own students' classes. We were talking about like the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and how that got passed. And, you know, we were kind of laying out like some of the historical roots and like, oh, wouldn't it be great if there was a civil war course? And like, oh, you know, they kind of hooked up. I definitely think it would be very manageable. The kids would have an honors option. And so I think we could get a broad range of students in there to supplement. It would not have an AP workload. By no means it would have an AP workload. But it would offer opportunities for kids to challenge themselves, but it would not have AP workload.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is our last round of history, yeah?
Thank you very much.
So Ms. White has worked with our department colleagues in the art department to develop this proposal for you, so I will turn it over to the expert.
Sure. Well, similarly to the proposal before me, we indicated, or we found out that art is probably one of the few places in our performing arts area where we don't have a non-studio class where students are making all the artwork. In music, we actually offer an AP music theory class, so you don't have to be making music per se to do that course. So we thought that after looking at the AP information for art history, we thought, wow, this would be a great opportunity for our students. And the idea of the level of rigor behind AP, we think that it could enhance the department per se so that they have an opportunity to really explore the historical context of the works that they would be studying. They cover a wide range of, actually, they start all the way from prehistory all the way to current events. So it really explores the entire gamut as well as exploring very specific historical 250 pieces of artwork. And it continues to support the things that they're doing outside of the arts where they're supporting their information with detail and looking at artwork as a piece of text instead of just artwork, you know? So it's one of our artistic processes. It's one of the areas that really tie into the responding aspect and the connecting aspect as to why we do things and why a tradition or a culture would be evident in a piece of artwork. So we thought, let's try to push this forward. This is an opportunity to reach the students who don't like to really make art. So, you know, it was the idea of, hey, how can we bring more kids into our department, have them have this art experience and continue to build on the foundation that they receive as early as kindergarten or responding to pieces of artwork through like our traveling art program, through our curriculum. And now as a high schooler, they have the opportunity to really dig deep and really expand the depth and the breadth of looking at artwork.
Ms. Appleby.
So actually, just before you said the words, I was thinking the same thing. So would this course actually be available to someone who needs an arts credit but doesn't really want to take music, doesn't really want to do the standard drawing and painting kind of course? But we do, are going to have these graduation requirements from the state that say you must have X number of arts, things that fit in that art bucket. So this would work for them?
Yes, it would. That's precisely the reason why we want to make sure we had an offering in there as well. As I mentioned, music has one, but visual arts does not, so this would fulfill that gap to make sure that they had a continuum that traveled through the arts even though it's not quite creating.
Ms. Erickson.
So I support this. As a student who took art history freshman year in college, which was 37 years ago, believe it or not, I still remember how my teacher, professor described art in that history fashion. And I'm not one of those people that can make art, so I totally support this.
Mr. Bernstein.
Sorry, I knew you answered it in the subsequent questions, which I'm just looking over right now. I guess I'm a little confused as to why it's AP versus not AP.
We really felt as a department that we wanted a rigorous course to draw in that kind of student who's really interested in on how do I describe a piece of artwork and talk about it using some content-specific vocabulary as well as supporting it with historical knowledge you may or may not come in with. After even talking with colleagues outside of even our district, an art appreciation course or history appreciation type course doesn't really get the same appeal as the AP designation. It's also something that could be used like your freshman year of college for your arts credit in college, provided that they have successful completion of the AP exam. So we thought this would be a more ambitious opportunity to go for the best sort of draw in the type of kid who's really looking at a rigorous application of, I can look at a piece of artwork, talk about it, and see how it's influenced.
Oh, well, it seems like you did some benchmarking for the districts. So what did you find?
I found that they're starting to include it more now with the requirements from the state. They are exploring some more non-traditional studio courses in their course catalog. Some districts run it every year, some districts run it on off years depending on the, you know, the interest, the student interest. You know, it's hard to survey without surveying the entire building to see what kind of interest you would gather. So it really, it's kind of like a test and trial. So if you notice, we also included sophomores and we had a big discussion in our department about it because we thought it could serve sophomores in two ways. It could be a precursor to a studio experience if that's what they wanted to do, or it could start, you know, as, this is my first introduction to an AP course, I have some background knowledge beginning from my elementary, middle, and, you know, my years through the arts curriculum of doing this. Could we have sophomores take part in this? Do they have the writing skills necessary to really articulate how they're going to talk about a piece of artwork? And ultimately, we decided that, I think in your proposal, it said that there's going to be an entrance exam, or we are probably not going to move forward with that, that if we choose to open it in sophomores, it's open to sophomores, period. And then it's the instructor's responsibility to help cultivate students' writing so that it is, you know, in the manner that the AP college board would be reviewing to make sure that they were successful in indicating what they were trying to convey in their essay.
Ms. Erickson.
I was actually going to do my question. Why did you answer this exam for sophomores? Because it seemed like you could maybe get at what you're looking for with the prerequisite or something. And I'm glad to hear you're trying to make it as accessible as it can be for our students.
Exactly. It was. You know, there were some things of really making sure that we put a child in the best place so that they can succeed. So we didn't want to say, okay, sophomores, and then they don't really have the, you know, skills to say, this is the research I've done, this is how I articulated. But then, as we flushed it out a little bit, we decided that it is part of the instructor's responsibility to teach them how to talk about a piece of artwork. That's something that we do in our curriculum anyway. So we were thinking, let's ask the entrance exam to make it open.
No, that, thank you very much. I think we're, we'll be taking this up at our next, I'm sorry, Ms. Erickson.
I do have a question. It's not for Laura, it's for Arne. It's not related to what's in the package, but it's related to how we move courses from pilot status to new courses, specifically as relates to innovation lab.
Funny, you should bring that up. K-Town and Jill and I were discussing this on Monday. Because it's appearing at multiple places in our calendar. I think, or correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would continue to have pilots reported out in the pilot's report. And then in the pilot report, if it's a recommendation to then go to out of pilot into full course, we would get that in the pilot report and then we would actually see it when it was actually presented as a new course proposal. So you might see it in two places.
So within the procedure that was revised with PGC, I think last year, we put in the pilot notification this time of the year. So that was my interpretation, that this would be random pilots for notifying the Board of Education, and then we would start to run them. And then we have the pilot report in June, which we just had, we're in lab, we presented in lab and multiple other ones. So yes, we're now in our final year of in lab and we would come back in June with the recommendation to continue more to lab. As well as advanced science six. Just as a follow-up, typically pilots are three years, so we would be in year four, which is...
Yeah, they had, we had that discussion too, about pilots, are all pilots going to stay three years?
I believe in one of the recommendations, or part of that note update, sorry, Dr. Winters had asked that we continue because of the data that he was collecting, along with English 113A as well. So we were extending it, but we would...
When he originally presented in lab, he made that point, because we had talked about that pilot being shorter, and he said, you really got to understand, you won't have enough cycles to get enough data.
Right, exactly.
So he made that point way a while ago. And I think that's been implemented that way, hasn't it?
Yes, it has, that 113A.
So that there's enough data.
Yes, correct.
Mr. Bernstein.
The only concern with that, you were basically going to be enrolling people in the following year's courses, but that hadn't been formally approved. Not that I don't want to see them approved, I certainly do, but I just want to caution that that was a issue.
Sorry, I'm not trying to completely get this. So because we're not seeing it until June, that's basically saying you guys are asking for them to continue as pilots for next year?
No, we would be coming to you in June to recommend, I'm guessing, that we would recommend that it now becomes part of the program of studies, it's no longer a pilot. But this is part of what we do, yes.
For 1920, no?
For 1818.
They already put in a role, that's it.
Yeah, that's why...
Right, so with that point, I would, let me go back, we'll talk with Dr. Bill Day and Dr. Winters. Maybe we do need to un-notify it perhaps through another mechanism.
This is, you know, and this is why we had this conversation. There was a little bit of these, there was a method to the madness of the timing of these reports.
And I think in working with PGC too, we were thinking this, that was appropriate notification in November with then a pilot report on all pilots with recommendations built in, so.
You guys will have to file that by weekend. Okay.
We can, yes, we can revisit that.
We appreciate, I think immensely, that there is a process.
Yes.
You know, before it was a little bit different, so, but you guys might want to see if that process works as well as you'd like it to. Oh, right, okay. Anything, anything else on this? Thank you very much. Thank you for all the staff that did the hard work. We appreciate the presentation.
I appreciate them as well. Thanks.
Now we'll go on to the enrollment report.
So Ms. Lau will present most of the content of the report. I think we're going to focus on two things primarily. The first will be just a discussion of some of the trends that you would observe within the report. And the second will be a brief discussion of the methodology used to generate Dr. Burke's projections that you're carrying in the report.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. Our total enrollment for 2017-18 is 9,016 students. That's pre-K at 12. That's up 45 students from last year. That is 99.5% of the budget in the month. That 45 student change...
You're just too far. Got to bring it closer.
A little closer.
It won't bite. Hopefully.
The 45 student change is comprised of two effects. One is the kindergarten replacement and the second is the migration. We had a negative 26 kindergarten replacement, meaning the incoming K class was 26 students smaller than the graduating ones who left in June. However, that was offset by a positive migration, net migration, accepting more students. What was interesting this year is that we had positive migration at the elementary, the middle, and the high school levels. Normally, there's a dip in the high school. As far as the composition of the groups, the high needs group has increased by 0.5% to 25.4. I think that's one trend we saw. And the second is that diversity is up to 37.6%. That's up 1.2% from the year prior. That is driven primarily by an increase in students identifying as Hispanic or to a race. Questions?
I was just going to ask, because there's different sections of this report, but it might be best if you just made the presentation and what we could maybe do is move through each section, because otherwise we're going to jump all over the place and it's going to make us a little zany. Or we'll make you a little zany of what will happen, so maybe we can, yeah.
Okay, well, the only thing I was going to move on to is to say, the methodology that Dr. Burke used was a traditional cohort survival method. He used a five-year average and he used that, he built it up from the ground up, so every grade put in every school and then built up from there.
So we have, we kind of have the enrollment section and then we have a choice section. I guess we have a response in between. So, so what I was going to do, I'm sorry, I got distracted by, why don't we just take questions about current enrollment, enrollment projection, and then we can go on to racial health.
Can I share with you what I learned? That's why I was trying to give this paper.
Okay.
Okay. As in, my real chief of study. My day, my first...
What I thought was really interesting, I didn't know, but maybe Ms. Lau already knows this, is that in Connecticut, when you're doing your master planning, the state suggests that you use your highest enrollment in eight years as the benchmark for the target of future planning. I did not know that. So I thought that was interesting, something I learned. And then in a summary table that will be part of our master plan, the projected dates are listed for five years of elementaries, eight years for middle, 10 years for high school. So it gives, you know, that's kind of another lens into that, so I think that'll be a nice addition to our report.
Mr. Bernstein.
So not to question your numbers, but in Appendix A, you have a number of 258 for new lab, in Appendix B, you have a number for 262 for new lab, and I think I heard yesterday the number's actually 264. So I don't know what the dates of the appendixes are, so it could just be a variation in the dates. Just wanted to point that out to you.
The number should be 258. Where are you?
If you look Appendix A, new lab actuals is 258. Page 14. And I don't know what date this was as of.
Right, that's the PS, yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, and then you look at Appendix B, which is, it's 16 and the total shows 262.
I will check that.
Thank you. And I think the actual as of yesterday was 260.
Well, that's a, that's a date difference.
Not that I was in two different, new lab made yesterday.
That's true. That problem is, this table did not tie in the PSI, so it did not pull it on the exact date.
The table was really large. Questions? Ms. Erickson, I see your hand half up, trying to get up.
I'm really trying hard to stay up here.
That's okay. Go where we need to go. This becomes critical to planning from forward, so if you don't get this one right...
It does, it does. And so I expect that next week when we have the budget presented, we'll have more questions perhaps on this, but I just, from a top level viewpoint, we, this is the second, Dr. Burke, we did his report based on this year's enrollment. And what we found is that using that cohort survival method is this year's enrollment really is impactful. So as I look at these numbers for some of the schools, I am a little concerned. I am concerned about new Lebanon. One of the questions that the board submitted was the impact of the 70 students who are in the catchment area for new lab but who aren't necessarily attending new lab. I don't know what enrollment you're going to present in the budget next week for 1819, but to me, Dr. Burke's number for new lab next year seems low. I think it's too... It's 235, can you? 235, based on versus 258 actuals. To me, I'm a little concerned about that number. Dr. Grif showed a decline at Kosco, which to me, that doesn't seem, that doesn't ring true to me. You know, so I'm just wondering, how are you processing Dr. Grif's report? How are you taking, and it's all statistical, it's all very valid, I understand that. But then there's Greenwich, right?
Can I just, as context, Ms. Erickson's raising a really important question. And we hit it every time we do an enrollment, that's the outside measure. Is this one, I know we saw this nominally in a committee. And there were some issues with it, right? Dr. Grif's original reports. And then there was a bunch of feedback given, right? Board members gave feedback, the questions, you had concerns, what have you. And then those were incorporated. Is this report now the revised incorporated with all of those issues? Because, no.
No.
When are, okay, that's, yeah, when are we going to get that?
Probably not have it in time, frankly.
In time for?
In time for the budget discussions, if you call.
Okay, that, I was, let me take it out of the context of anything else. I presume we'll eventually get it. Do we have a sense of when we're eventually going to get that?
There's no...
He's not planning on, I mean, he is a subcontractor through the, through, for the master plan.
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe I need to ask the question again. Is this his, is this his final report to us?
Yes, but it's not the final report, because I think you probably have some additional information.
Yeah, 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 but I wanted to try to close off the Grif part, because you're right. We take it in and then we decide what we're going to have, right? What we're going to use for our enrollment projections.
The enrollment projections for 2018-19 are based on our, the Dr. Grif and yours.
Right, but then we've modified them.
There were some minor modifications.
Based upon what we knew about, that's called local tribal knowledge that he may not have had, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, I think I lost.
Yeah, based on actuals.
Yes.
So they have a...
Okay.
So that's my question. So is the 1819 number is going to be Dr. Grif's numbers? Or are you going to do a little massaging? Some of these just don't, they leap out and say, "Yeah, you know, that's not usually how things happen." And like at Riverside, so the total number is fine. It's consistent with this year's. But it's showing a big increase in one grade and a pretty big drop off between losing 16 grade fives students. I know you do lose some kids to private school, but that seems like an inordinately large number of students. And okay, I do go with this number, so it's true.
We, we have to, we have to, we have to get really, we, it's important that we land this and that everybody's comfortable. Because if we get someplace later and this number comes up and someone is questioning what that number is, it's not helpful later. So landing it now is actually worth the time.
Yeah, so, this is why I wanted to talk about the methodology a little bit more in depth. Because Ms. Lau was speaking, went to the technical assumptions applied to the projection methodology. But in a broad stroke, when we look at the 10-year back window of the data historically, we find two things. Projections are pretty reliable district-wide, but they're not going to be within more than one section of precision either way. So it's a two-section net swing. So, the problem, not the problem, but the methodology that Dr. Grif employs basically projects out the district-wide trend on a linear basis. And when you look at the out years, even just the outer five years that Dr. Grif is anticipating, and look at the school-to-school projected differences, the variability is far more narrow than the variability of changes that we found year-to-year within school enrollment at that cluster level over the last 10 years. So we recognize that the methodology he's using, which is for kind of broad planning purposes, may not be the best methodology to understand, within more than one section of precision either way, what enrollment in a particular school is going to be. So to your point, Ms. Erickson, the numbers don't jive with what we locally would expect in terms of the trends within Greenwich. Now with that said, after we had kind of Dr. Grif go back and finesse the numbers a little bit, we're trying to figure out what partner we can find that can better apply local trends and exogenous trends of demography, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we're talking more of like a demographic and demographic study that we've been trying to get together.
But for, but for, right. Right, but, so, maybe I can just ask to bring that to conclusion. So these are the best numbers that are available right now, that the administration has presented to the board, that we would use for planning going forward.
What's your time horizon of going forward?
Next few years, right? Or no? We're going to get this updated annually. But anything that we talk about that's projecting out over the next couple of years, these are the numbers we should be using, right?
At this moment, it's the best set right now.
Right.
But we'd like to get a different methodology.
And we may update it, but for us, this is the one we should use. And then we'll see another update way a year from now, is this normal practice. And if there's something in between, you wouldn't tell us, right?
Yeah, we're scrambling to get a more robust methodology that we think is more appropriate for.
But in the meantime, this is what we should use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Applebaum and then Ms. David.
So there were a couple of observations I had, which was, you know, as Dr. Grif's report ends up with a, you know, five-year, you know, it's like every five years and, you know, there's ups and, you know, it's like a roller coaster, you know, relatively flat but slight up, slight down. And he ends with a slight down, but he doesn't go into the next year, which if you look at the historical trend, roughly every five years, whatever, the bottom is, that that would be the bottom of the dip and the dip would start up again. So I just, I think that's an important point for, with our local law law to recognize. The other thing that struck me was looking at the number of sections per, per building is you see a consistent, at New Lebanon, two sections, two sections, two sections. But it totally correlates to exactly when we sent the kindergarten offsite where they could only have two sections. So we know that we would have had three sections in several years had they not had to go offsite. So I want to just make sure that the numbers are corrected to reflect who should be there and the number of sections, because when the building is finished, you will see the full complement of sections returning in that, in that way. I think I'm fully expecting that.
No, you're absolutely right, Dr. Grif did not factor in much specific knowledge on that.
Sorry, I'm not paying attention. Ms. David?
I've been frustrated for a number of weeks, even before we went to the RTM, that our story is not being told to the public. And there's a lot of misinformation about New Lebanon and the construction of a new school. So I want to highlight a few facts in your report. There are 319 students in that catchment area, 319, although only 258 are enrolled. Factors that influence that include the incredibly deteriorated learning environment of the school, the overcrowded classrooms, the hallways, the offsite kindergarten, the offsite preschool for four years. Why would we expect to have a fully enrolled 319 in a school that can't accommodate that population? It's bad logic, so I want to point that out to the public. In addition to that, New Lebanon had the largest number of births among all elementary schools in 2014. That is the year that will feed into a new school at the kindergarten grade level. There are 53 outbound magnet students. I don't know what grades they're in, but certainly a large percent of them would consider returning to a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility. I don't think any of this is being highlighted in our discussions. And I do believe that the 258 is misleading, because it is as if you took a camera with a photograph of who's sitting in the classroom today. That's not talking about the future.
Mr. Burks, actually with you?
Yeah, Ms. Rary.
Yes, Ms. Rary.
So, looking at the new construction, there's a little discussion on page 20, but on page 46 especially, Table 8. There are projects certainly missing from this list that were before PNZ. I know you're both aware of them. Post-Road Iron Works sits right in the nexus of Glenville, Hamilton Avenue, and New Lebanon. And then you've got 777 West Putnam. And then the changes in the waterfront zoning on the western side of town are also likely. I just find it incredible to say we're going to see 16 kids from all of this development. That's the only push to progress.
I encourage, that is one of the comments when we talk about things that are not considered in Dr. Grif's report. That's a large one, is the change. I have a count of 650 units.
It was 69.
Ms. Rary.
Since we seem to be everywhere, I...
We lost control of that. Can we go back to Section 1, what it was supposed to be?
So I'm in Section 3, actually, page 12. I just had a clarifying question for myself. Catchment versus actual enrollment, so for example, if you look at new lab, it says the catchment diversity is 70%, but the actual diversity is 80%. So does that mean that there's a percentage of non-minority students that are not going to New Lebanon?
Yes.
No, I'm not suggesting why they would.
She wants to confirm the head. So, anybody else on Section 1? Because I'm going to go back to Section 1. Okay, can I, then I'm going to be in Section 1.
Okay.
Section 1 table, are we going to special education status? It looks like we're slowly trending up on identification, I guess. And if I recall from the special education report, somewhere, maybe I got this wrong, nationally within the state of Connecticut being within 9 to 11% is normal. 9 to 11% is normal. What, 0.4% on 9,000 is a significant number. What, do we expect this trend to continue or what's our expectation?
I would assume at this point that we are going to level out around 10.5, 10.6, which is the state average. We've been creeping up a little bit. It's those, it's a number of different factors, but the end needs to round the disabilities at this point. We had a number increase, we had increasing rates of state disabilities in the past. That number is...
That number is low doubt, but we're seeing more kids with milder disabilities. We're all seeing more, we're also seeing more students with IDPs moving into the district. So the migration of kids coming in with IDPs is a little bit larger than it has been in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't mean, my question was in any way, I didn't mean to indicate it's a good or... There's no value on the number. My expectation is, correct me if I'm wrong, that number is going to be the number based upon... The number of kids identified is going to be the number based upon need. If that winds up being 15%, it winds up being 15%. It's not...
Correct.
It is what it is, right? But it's not, it's, right.
Set indication.
Right, but it currently is up a little bit. Which is a good thing. Okay, any other, I have another question, Section 1, anybody else on Section 1? Could I, Phil, when I look at this high needs table on page 6, maybe this is a data presentation thing? It's kind of a little... Yeah, well, I don't know color too, but if you go, anybody got their laptop or iPad? But the question I had is, do you know what these, how do I figure out what these numbers are? So it's 48% in New Lebanon, which is great. But it's a, it's a smaller school when I compare it to 35% yesterday. Yeah, the numbers, right? Because it just, I look at it and I go, wow, that's what it is, but I don't have a sense of the scope. Do you, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, that would really be helpful, then I'll go on. And then the last one is, it just seems like economically, if I'm reading this right, free reduced lunch is down, that's probably similar to a national trend, stabilized, I should say. Is there anything else to take away from that? No? Anything special?
It's what it is.
Yeah, it just is what it is. Okay, any other questions on Section 1?
I don't have my glasses, so it's hard for me to tell which section where I want to say is in. But one of the things that I noticed and I stopped and thought about for a while is there seemed to be a bit of an emphasis on saying, we have an increased percentage of students that are single need. But when I kind of went through and looked at it, it seemed to me that the other way to look at that is it seems that we have a decrease in students who have two or more needs. And so it was sort of an interesting way to point out that fact that made me feel like it may not be necessarily representing the sort of, I don't know, the reality in a way that I might want to look at it. So I just thought it was going to go, and I might not have worded it quite that way. And it made me stop and kind of really work through the numbers to understand that. Because it actually doesn't so much represent a big increase, it's a shift, yes.
Section 2, racial balance, Ms. David.
Okay, this is my conclusion, please tell me that I'm incorrect. I'd love to be told when I'm wrong. It looks like we cannot fix racial balance except through New Lebanon school. The reason for that is that we have overcrowded rooms at ISD, JC, and Hamilton Avenue. Hamilton Avenue is at capacity? The only way we're ever going to fix racial balance is by adding capacity at New Lebanon. So I'll stop there, I have another observation, keep going. I'll stop there, do you agree?
Glenville is also pretty close in capacity, it's not over in most classrooms.
Yeah, I don't have an opinion of the reported numbers, frankly, because there's so many...
So do you agree that we are at capacity at Hamilton Avenue? That we cannot accept magnet students, given our current projections of how many classrooms we have? And that our overcrowded rooms are at our other magnets, ISD, JC, and Hamilton Avenue? Those are our overcrowded, those are our overcrowded schools that are magnets. And then adding to that is North Myenis, but that's not to do with racial balance. I am aware of Glenville, but that's not to do with racial balance. So I'm on the theme of racial balance right now. Only New Lebanon can fix racial balance if we decide that we're going to comply.
I think Jennifer, I have the same kind of question, but I think the thing that most helps is if you look at the page 14, the 2017-18 enrollment. So like you take Hamilton Avenue, right? And you look at the number of sections and the average class size. In a lot of cases, they're well below. It's a problem, because they're well below the class size guideline maximum, right? They're well below these maximum. But then you have the question of like at New Lebanon, they're also, and some of these grades have been well below. But then you look at the common spaces and you say, I'd rather not put those kids in that school. So it seemed to me, when you made that assertion, I had the same question. And I was puzzled by Hamilton Avenue, because later there's something in here about the number of available classrooms, which I'm going to come to. But if you look at Ham Ave, you know, you look at 14, 8, 13, 18, 17, you can take more kids at that school and not blow, not open new sections and not blow away the classified guidelines. So, but you know, then you have, so one is the can you? And the second one is do you want to? Right, so those are two different questions.
I think the chart on the page before where you're looking bears out that your numbers don't work, because you already have a deficit of three classrooms, three classrooms, four classrooms, three classrooms, three classrooms.
What is that, yeah, I was, because by the way, that's a really good point.
So the class sizes are not going to...
What's this deficit of? What is that deficit? Is it, is it projected we won't have enough because we'll need more sections? Or what is it, what is that, to quote the methodology?
This is the same table that's been presented in the last several enrollment reports based on 2012 audit of the available classrooms. I agree that there is...
And who determines classroom availability at the site?
Would you suggest we use this, or would, by the way, you, you...
Yeah, I'll shoot straight, this is something that...
Because it shows, wow, we're going to get all this capacity at Kosco. And it shows we're about to have a screaming problem at Hamilton Avenue. And I couldn't figure out, I was like, oh...
This has to be refined, because since...
This has to be refined, because since, since the original 2012 audit, this was something that was, the available classrooms were determined by each site, so... So we shouldn't use this. So if we were to use this, the next level is to standardize the definition and specification.
You suggested that we do audit.
So from a management perspective, we already know that's... But you did it using the original file, and we should just know what it is. Yeah, just for consistency, we presented it, and we know that's the next level of the work to define the dogs. Yeah, Ms. Applebaum.
I'm letting a little foot now, because somebody's gonna look at this and not agree.
Or by the way, if you don't think it's valid, you should take it out.
Because my...
Because it's, it's, I'm sorry, if it's inviting more questions than it's answering, and we don't feel it's a valid depiction, then until you update it, you may not want to include it. If you need to include something like this, it should just be something that's... Yeah, we included it for consistency and for the trend. So the broken clock is right two times a day, you know, just so you can get a sense for the trend, looking at the same method of, yeah, that's why it's there. So there's some validity in that, but you're right in that we have an opportunity to tighten up. Because Ms. Raven's point, someone will take this, and if it requires some detailed, I mean, it was kind of weird looking at the table, and the explanation is, oh, by the way, kind of ignore it, because it's not... Yeah, if anything, we can include some language, but it needs the appropriate context of that, right? Anyway, I'm sorry, we're a little, go, Ms. Applebaum.
And my question or comment would be that, especially if it was 2012, that answers some of it, but we've identified that, you know, yes, you know, art, music, but in some schools they have two rooms designated for art, or two rooms designated for music because of the size of the population. So I think we need to make sure that we're in apples to apples, are schools using, having a designated science room for pass-through for projects where they're not picking up and taking down now, so what is the standard so that we know where we're, we're going from for that?
I think the board will see good inputs to this in that master facility plan, because part of this benchmarking here, all of your facilities for all of those things.
I'm sorry, Ms. Diddy, you were on racial balance.
So I just want to finish up on racial balance, and then I'm gonna stop speaking. I want to point out that in addition to the problem of capacity at Hamilton Avenue, there are 97 new units of housing that are not under construction but are to come. So that area of town will continue to produce the kind of housing that could possibly have students in our system, so I'm hoping that we're all gonna look at the big context on why we're building New Lebanon, what the growth in that area of town is, and how it fits with our racial balance plan.
I would tell you personally, I'm really excited you're gonna go to demographic base. I talked to a demographer about Hamilton Avenue, New Lebanon. What they said, two of them said, is an interesting trend will happen. You build a new school, it may attract a completely different demographic. Okay, what will happen is it may spur construction, but the other thing that happens in neighborhoods that go, that gentrify is housing stock that is multifamily often reverts to single family, right, as the economics of a, so it's just gonna be all kinds of puts and takes in this thing, and to Ms. Dayton's point, and I think Mr. Bernstein's point, you know, to the degree that you guys can figure out what all those puts and takes are gonna be.
You could just get that crystal ball.
No, but good demographers can, right? I think you made a good point, that Dr. Griff's methodology is pretty basic, traditional, would be a better way to say that, and to have something a little more sophisticated that could map out what's likely to happen, the good news is it'll have a lower capacity anyway, so, you know, it'll, it'll be interesting how that goes. I'm sorry, does anybody else have any question, more questions on racial balance on two? Laura?
Not racial balance, but just as a general caveat, because I think a lot of work has gone into this analysis, and it's sort of what we expected, but as we found a few years ago with Malone at McBrum, there's more Greenwich than meets the eye. So I really think, to Jennifer's earlier point about telling our story, I look at this classroom capacity chart, and I think, okay, this is before New Lebanon School comes online, and you're saying 2019, now we have, for this, eight additional classrooms. So I think we need to either put a caveat, or say what the next steps are, right in the body of this report. So when people say, it's in this report, we can say, but it also says in this report we have additional steps we need to take, and this is what we're doing, or this is how you have to look at this information. So before we vote to accept this report, I would like some sort of language in there to say, this is a snapshot, this is a point in time, we have more work to do.
Ms. Applebaum?
Yeah, because to that end, I think what we found is, you know, where Dr. Griff is picking up specifics on numbers based on what is, that in Greenwich, there's a great deal of migration that comes in after the birth years, so just judging based on births, and even just births at Greenwich Hospital, and maybe if he went to Stanford, is not remotely picking up who will potentially be there to be replacing the kindergarten classes.
They have in and out migration trend, full in and out migration trend in their, in this study, right? He didn't just do live births, did he? He didn't, so all the ins and outs, the ins and out trend, which we have a high percentage of at Greenwich, is that accounted for? Meaning, meaning, we're not a community, there is a community where people are going to, but many people come to here, come here, particularly school-aged children, but in migration, that is accounted for?
That is in there.
That's accounted for, okay. I'm sorry, any more questions on racial balance, I go along.
Do you want to share anything, though, about Malone McBrum's study, actually, over all the past 10 years, the numbers were accurate, it just wasn't necessarily which schools, right?
Yeah, Jill, to Laura's point, they had predicted that Riverside by now would be down to 300 students. Obviously, that wasn't the right number. Can I ask you a question about, on page 10, the table? Do you guys have a crosswalk between, do you guys have a crosswalk between minority enrollment by race and ethnicity, also with income? Is that hard to do? The reason I'm asking is we have an increase in, like Hispanic population, we have a decrease in other populations, and some of that is kids with challenges, the two or more high needs, and then some are not. It would be interesting to understand what that looks like. As an example, Riverside will tell you they have a very high population of, and as ISD has a very high population of Hispanic, but it's a different, it's people at a different economic status. My only concern is the data quality issue, in regard to how consistently families report income to us. Yeah, okay, if you don't have it, you can't... We don't have universal, certainly for students with black degrees, one for the other. And then one more question I, one more question I had is, on the racial balance list, you say differentiate from grade level average. I thought the, is that the state requirement?
Yes, it's just that the, the numbers used for a school 3K are just slightly...
You're supposed to look at grade, I thought you're supposed to look at the total percentage in your building versus your total percentage in the district, not average, that's an average of an average.
No, it's the comparison of, against the district average for, it's all I'm doing...
Does grade level average mean grade level, or does it mean district average?
It's the district average for every grade, like, for the grade.
Meaning high school versus elementary versus middle.
Right. And also, we have some less than 3K, all the middle, middle, that's what you look at, all those.
And the other one is, well, I'll take it, okay, school choice, which is magnets. Any questions on section three? Anybody? I had a quick question, your table on 16, that is the table that keeps getting, whoever started that one was great. This is the ins and the outs. Two things jumped out to me, and I was hoping you could comment on them. ISD seems to have a huge, I know their catchment area is small, right? And so they don't, actually, their catchment area isn't even around them, right? But how do you think about this? Because they're now coming from everywhere, they used to be more concentrated, which is good, that they're coming from everywhere, but North Mayanus is, you know, is 20, it's almost 20% of that school. How do, how do we think about this, or how should we think about this? Because the other one that leaps out is if you go look at New Lebanon, right, what's a little odd is, you know, the relationship between Julian Curtis and Hamilton Avenue, some of those people you wouldn't have expected to move, or if they're moving, well, actually, we, do you have, do you, well, do you have data on why people have selected an alternate school? When you, when we enroll them, do we ask them, why did you, what was your choice about why you did that? Is that important? Seems to me it would be important to know. As an example, we are, we are presuming 70 kids left New Lebanon because, and that may be true, right? But we, how do we know that? Do we know that? Yeah, I don't know if you'd like to speak to it. Any trends you've observed during... Or why are, why are people going to Dundee? I mean, are they going to Dundee because of ISD, or they're escaping overcrowding someplace else?
We don't ask that question, but that's something that we could do a survey of with the, just with the, the people that we already know are there, they're there, they tell us they're there because they wanted to go to a magnet school, and that, they applied to wherever that opening was, and then they waited for the lottery, we went through, and if there was space in the classrooms, then that's where they were offered space at a magnet school. And they do it by choices, their top three choices, so if they don't get their first choice, then we go down to the second, then we go down to the third. And because they are offered those choices, it's, their first choice is one school, their second choice is another school, their third choice is a third school, or they only do one, or they only do two. So if they're putting those choices down, they have their own reason as to why they make that choice, and that's not something we would ask, well, why are you choosing that school? They get the choice, so we like people to have their choice without examining what the choice was.
Yeah, but interesting, it would be interesting to know to the degree that we could use it to effectively, because essentially if we get overcrowding someplace, and it gets really bad, eventually we will be faced with some really bad choices. So to the degree that you can encourage people by creating the right programs, the right incentives, to move voluntarily, it's helpful to understand what motivates people to move, right? And, and that's it, that's the only reason I ask, but if we don't have it, we don't have it. The last one I wanted to ask you about was, do you have any data about what has happened as a result of the change in policy that does not allow students who are going to a particular magnet to then go on to the middle school? I mean, we made that change three, four years ago, but it, I remember hearing, I hear a lot of people that changed their decision about what to do, okay? And I'm wondering if you guys have collected any data to see the impact of that policy change, and what it did or didn't do to the magnet program. We have not yet looked at those questions, so that was an opportunity to look at that.
I just want to make a point about New Lebanon, because I think Principal Ritchie has said it many times at many meetings, is that she knows many of the families who have opted to not attend New Lebanon School, and she is privy to the reasonings, and a lot of it does have to do with this parents not wanting the students to go through any disruption.
So if that's the case, then, right, then we should, and it's true, that's great, because then we're gonna build this new school, and what we're really saying is we expect, so is that the, that's the assertion from the administration, 70 kids or so, or 50 kids should all move back?
Well, maybe not those kids, but those that are in the area that are on deck.
And then, I'm sorry, go ahead, so is that the...
Yeah, so the other net effect that I would logically expect is, as you have more capacity with the new school at New Lebanon, and students move back, some of whom are at Hamilton Avenue right now, you've actually opened up seats for students to select to use Ham Ave as a stem site, which is a good place to.
Right, so that would say that it would take pressure off of Hamilton Avenue, right? And, okay, that's what I was trying to understand, I'm trying to understand what we expect to happen. Yeah, higher percentage of students would be catching up. Other questions on the other floor?
I have breaking news, any more questions? I have a breaking news story for you, Emily. See, it's a good thing I'm here tonight. We are the boys soccer conference champions. I need to make a motion. Everyone thinks I'm not paying attention. We have to extend the meeting, I'm going by my phone call. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to 10 on favor.
Okay. I think we're done with this, anything else? Thank you all. School calendar, Dr. Goodback. What was the score?
1-0.
The award ceremony is starting on right now.
Right, so good news, we're literally way ahead of 1920. All right, so calendar, we may have a couple of modifications between this meeting and next meeting, so I don't want you to look really hard at it, because, you know, when you look, it's 1920, and so we're looking at the papers. So this calendar option offers you 181 days of student attendance, 187 days of teacher attendance. It does keep your February winter break, your April spring break, but we are looking at that, the 8th will likely not be a day off, that will be a full day of school at April 8th, so I'll make that adjustment for you. And then in October, we were talking about the Sudan cabinet, we may be electing to trade two of our early release days, September 25 and October 16, instead for a full day institute October 7, because, or yeah, for full day teacher learning, because the 8th we would be off, so that would be a nicer weekend for the families, and that is actually, that day is the traditional national college search day, most colleges across the nation have special programming on that, on that day.
Can you repeat that, 20, September 25?
So we have early release days on those days, the 25, right, and the 16, so we'll trade those early releases for a day, a full day of personal, personalized professional teacher learning on the 7th of October. Right, so that we, families can do a little, families can do a long weekend, but high school kids, it's a great weekend for college visits across the nation, it's a national, it's a national day, that just happens every day. It's very popular, so definitely take it off the school to do that. So those are some of the shifts that are now...
Okay, question?
The 8th, you said you were gonna go back to a full day, not an early release?
The 7th would be in your district. Oh, yeah, yeah, so, right, so 7th would be, yes. In, back into the spring, April 7th, we are gonna ask for an early release for some professional learning, and then the 8th would be a full day of school. So minor shifts, so we'll bring back the corrective copy.
Jill, is there, I, is there, I've got a lot of feedback, it's not a problem at my household, but for some people, it turns out, I'm getting feedback, that it's a challenge that professional learning is, you know, reg, these early release days are dead smack in the middle of the week. For some people, that's really hard. Is there a way to make those at either end of the week, so that they are... Is there a way to make those at either end of the week, so that they are more helpful to some families?
You know, you have this incredible rotation of these days that's described in a 117-page catalog, so we can certainly review that catalog.
No, I'm just saying, because it seems like it's at the, it's one of us, third or fourth week of every single month.
Right, because there's a rotation of the days of the Wednesday meeting days, where teachers are spending after school, and they're doing ones as a faculty meeting, one as a district meeting, you know, there's a pattern, there's a pattern.
Is there, is there?
And it's in a contract.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying, is, but is it even feasible? Forget the contract part for a second. Does it even work? Could you, could you do it on Mondays, as an example?
I mean, you can negotiate whatever you have to negotiate, right?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, for practical purposes, you can say, I can't get, I can't get people to come in as the instructors for professional development. I'm asking if there's any kind of operational impediments to that.
I have no, in your honor, to know Wednesday, Irene, is there any gift, is there any magic to Wednesday?
It creates me, but it does work within that Wednesday release calendars. You just know every week, there's an expectation for some form of professional learning, whether it's faculty meeting, or the district days, and that. I mean, we can certainly explore other options. We have not looked at using Mondays or Fridays, but Mondays, there are a lot of holidays, so we would probably lose, and we'd have to alternate to somewhere else.
What time do people, what time do people get out? It's five, right? So it's five on a Friday.
That would be the nicest thing to do, five.
No, I just, people raised it.
I saw it, I saw it coming.
And I, well, yeah, so I just thought I'd ask, okay.
I mean, I don't know, I don't think this is a widespread concern. It's been in place since Betty Sternberg was the superintendent. People, we broadcast a calendar well in advance. I understand it may be challenging for some people, just like a snow day or an early release for an inclement weather event is a challenge. I think as long as we communicate, and as long as our community partners provide options, I don't know why we need to.
No, it wasn't that. The one I got, which I wasn't thinking about in my house, is numerous people have come up to me recently and said, hey, by the way, I'm a two-family household, so organizing a day off in the middle of the week is harder for me. It's easier for me if it's at the beginning or the end of the week. As I say, my household, it's, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, I was saying, because I don't think we've gotten that feedback over all this time, so.
Okay. So I, you know, considering we represent people, I thought it would be appropriate to raise it, particularly there are people we represent, so.
There are other people that actually recommend, offered a recommendation of late arrivals rather than early releases, so there's always another option, that's wrong. There's always something to think about.
Something for you guys to consider. Okay. Any more on the calendar? Okay. The next, last item, yes?
Just because we try to allow for, before we go on calendars, for there to be public input, and this will be at the next meeting, where there will be a public hearing if we can, whatever changes you're going to make are out, on the early side, so people can look at it.
Okay. Next, the Board of Education meeting, Dr. Goodback.
All right, so this offers an explanation and rationale for some of the days of the meetings, where right now have the meetings remaining on Thursdays, and of course, I imagine once you seat your newly elected board, I'm assuming they affirm that the day of the meeting week, is that the board decision? Yes. So I assume they will do that, and then we are maintaining the Thursdays, we are scheduling in or adding in those formal retreat dates, the budget dates, as well as recognitions being held several times during the year. Any rationales for conflicts based on holidays are listed, or for the school calendar, to make sure there's that alignment. And we didn't, so we are shifting some of the work that happens with the board, and trying to compress your work into those official business meetings, with understanding that there will be committees and such scheduled in addition to these dates.
Ms. Anderson.
Now I'm looking at this hard copy, maybe I dreamed it, but the non-business meetings, was there a proposal to start those, so the board retreats at 4:00 PM? Did I, did I dream that?
You didn't, that was actually in part of the proposal, I might have did on a second page or something, and if that does not work for working people, obviously you can adjust, modify that. The idea was that it would just be a longer, if we don't want to have just a two-hour retreat, in other words, so whether that's a six to 10, or five to eight.
I just wanted to comment, since I kind of had the mic, so I'm very excited about these changes, because I think I was always expressing thoughts about being more effective in the way that we conduct the meetings, and not so repetitive, so I'm excited about these changes.
This is still, this is still 20 to 21, I think it's 21 meetings, but it's still, you know, it seems consistent with what we're doing now, because now we're doing, what, 18 meetings, 16? That's a bunch of retreats. Right. I'm sorry. Ms. Anderson, you have a question?
Well, actually, not so much a question, as, as our policies actually require a work session and a public hearing, so just as we do move this forward, we need to refer to policy governance, that's a policy that needs to be reviewed anyway, so it gives us an opportunity to rewind the policies that are new schedule.
Correct, thank you. The other thing that I don't know that made this particular rationale sheet, but we would love to, the board to consider, having a couple of formal roundtables, or formal town halls through the year, hosting those proactively as opportunities, rather than reacting to an issue or item, so we'd like to bring that forward as a thought.
Just a point, on location, the first meeting for next year will be at New Lebanon School. There will be a construction, so you may want to consider a different location.
So overall, I really like the idea of having retreats, having, you know, preset times to really have discussions, because I feel like that's, that's an issue I've really had in terms of chunking things down into small pieces. But just, just so I can understand, how does this impact the way we do things now, which is, we discuss a particular report at a work session, and then vote on it at the business meeting, so I just didn't quite catch that in the explanation, as to how we imagine that for future.
We never want to surprise our board members, so we're always going to prepare you with reporting, information through appropriate committees, appropriate processing, and then you won't be a surprise when you see it at a business meeting.
I guess the follow-up question to that is, how do we put those reports out to the public, so that when they come for public comment, they're actually commenting on something they've seen and need to discuss?
Well, you guys may have noticed that our protocol for posting has completely changed, right? So this is, this is, this is what I was interested, I think we need to hear more as we go, because this is changing the protocol, right? So what winds up happening to one on the public is, this would mean going forward, the public would only have an opportunity to see something as they do now, they only see stuff now 48 hours in advance. It's not, it's no longer posted when it's posted to us. It's posted, because we get it posted over the weekend in our package, but that's not public anymore, it's, it's not public until the 48, which means, if you move to a full business cycle, if you've moved to a full business cycle and you're not dealing with it in multiple meetings, it's essentially meaning that the public has 48 hours to look at it. And then all business meetings would presumably have public comment as they do now, presumably that's not going to change, but it's going to be different. So the amount of time for the public to absorb it, stakeholders to look at stuff and absorb it, and then come comment, is truncated. So they'll, you know, the other point will be, we're running on an agenda plan that, now our agenda plan is kind of very fixed, and it'll move to something, it's moving to something that's a little bit more flexible, that follows an outline. So, you know, I don't know that we know the usage of how people look at our agenda plans right now, because they're very fixed in public, and to what degree they look those ahead and say, ah, I see that item, I'm interested in it, it's coming at that date, you know, it, it's going to be a little bit different, and we probably need to work through the details, and I think you're working through some of it.
Change is good. It'll be okay.
Yes?
So I think we mentioned we would have some proactive sessions as opposed to reactive, so I think that's a way of taking the pulse of what our constituents are thinking about. And we always accept comment on agenda items and non-agenda items at nauseam, so I don't know that the 48 hours. Okay, scratch that, fully. I saw a cute movie where a little girl was trying to describe what that meant. So anyhow, so I think that there is opportunity to take the public comment at so many junctures.
I think, my sense is that we're, I guess, I won't be here to take advantage of this, I wish I would have been able to take advantage of this, because I see it as a positive set and direction, and I think that the nature of the reports, and the kind of information, and how it's going to be spread through to the board, and the conversations will be such that it won't, we won't need to have that very rigid, you know, here's this report, then this, then this, then this. So it'll be a much more logical flow, it'll be a thematic kind of conversation, and that there will be plenty of opportunity for public comment, as well as a, an easier work stream for the board and administration.
I have two questions. The first is, are you saying that all our meetings start at 6:00 now, our business meetings? Only what we have awards to give out, only then? Isn't that pretty much all our business meetings? Okay, so most of them will start at 6:00. I just want to, most of our meetings will start at?
I believe it's five, Kim. It's five findings that will begin at 6:00 now, so it's over at 47.
Five of 11 will start at 6:00.
Okay, and second of all, is there a date for the day of retreat? That's the January retreat, and I'm very interested in us having, I wondered if you wanted to have the new board establish and then have that date, so they have a part of that conversation, rather than just telling them, you're new, and by the way, this is the Saturday, you'll be still here.
Okay, any more on this? With that, we'll move on. Actually, I have a budget resolution. Ms. O'Donnell.
I do want to share with you, I did work in a district of 43,000 students that had this schedule, and it worked. It'll be okay.
I didn't mean my question to suggest that I was opposed to, I was just trying to understand. I presented our revised budget resolution for your review. It includes the modifications that we talked about, on the table fix. Happy to answer my questions on that?
Question. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. I think we just need to redline the document when we move it forward, just to show the differences from last year. Just a question on 41D. This gets at the point that we raised in our last discussion, but I think there might be a simpler way. I did look at a number of family foundations, our 501(c)(3), but I'm not necessarily convinced it has to be a 501(c)(3). And then we have, last year, policy governance reviewed and revised our policy 020 and our Gibson Grant Procedure, 020.3. So there is basically a policy governance as a de facto committee setup, and there's a whole series of parameters. So rather than the equitable distribution being highlighted, I think we should just maybe refer to the policy and procedures of the board, and that just is a more blanket statement. And then we can explain it. But I think this does get, this does cover the Asia Society Grant, which will be helpful, and then if we do apply for any other innovation grants, that will be covered as well. So I think this gets at where we tried to. Did you have a chance to talk to Mike Warner, or? Okay, any objection?
Not really.
I'm going to jump in, because I am going to be known as the sports superintendent, I just know it. Tell my husband, he'll be proud. Volleyball, 1-3-1 over Richfield. Here are the coverage, chance. Oh, okay. So semifinals. And hey, it's great to cheer in the middle of meetings, this is good. That should make the news, Emily, there was cheering.
Okay, so this item, any more questions on this? This item is before us. We need to take action. No, that's fine. All those in favor?
Laura, you had mentioned a change, a possible change in the language, do you want to do that before we?
Oh, that's probably a good idea. Okay, so let's amend, first, we just need to redline it, and let's amend the beginning of the second line, from an organization, or let's say, from a qualified organization. Yeah, I don't know. All right, I don't mind this 501(c)(3). Do you have a problem with the 501(c)(3)? I don't think it, I don't think it cuts anybody out. Well, I just think that it's pretty prescriptive, there may be, you may be applying for an innovation grant that isn't across all schools, right? So this has language that talks about equitable distribution. I did, I just can't formulate the words, it's just, it's, the grant should be in compliance with our policies and procedures. Come on, Mr. Lawyer, help me out here.
District committee that is responsible for ensuring, ensuring the policies and procedures are right.
How about if we just say it's, it's from an organization and meets all of the board policies and procedures?
If you're looking for that language.
The committee is the?
You should identify, you should use the identical language that's in the one, for, item 44. So, you know, it's such gifts, but it could be such grants, right? Shall comply with all town board education policies and procedures, purchasing and contractual requirements.
That would be fine.
Be overseen by, and then if you need the rest of it, do you need the rest of it? No. You need just that part, right?
No, because our policies dictate that it goes to policy governance.
If, if there's an exception, if it meets all the policies.
So, okay, so we're, just for?
We don't need to act on this tonight, do we? Can we act on it?
It is an actual item, it's on our agenda.
They actually need to postpone until November 15, so we could just work out the awardings, and we don't want to do this on the?
And you want to do that? Ms. O'Donnell, you get to fly over the target yet again. By the way, in fairness to Ms. O'Donnell, is there anything else somebody wants to change? Because here's the time to do it. No? Good. Okay, going once, twice, no more changes. I suppose you guys do, please no more changes, and you'll give us a revised version for next year. Yes?
So motion to postpone until?
Yeah, we just, we don't, yeah.
Because you moved it, so it has to be?
Does somebody want to, I tell you what, I can withdraw it, I can withdraw it. I'm going to move to withdraw the motion. Okay. Meeting agenda, or agenda plan. As I said earlier, Gayton and Jill and I had a conversation about the protocol going forward on agenda plan. Jill might try to explain that, but essentially what we're going to do going forward now is because we've made the decision to, in our last meeting, or the meeting prior, to put the agenda plan primarily in the hands of the superintendent. And then, so what I think is going to happen, and if I said this improperly, Jill, going forward, we're not going to go through each piece of the agenda plan. What will happen, though, is for this year, Jill tends to use the existing agenda plan as the primary outline upon which things will be followed for the remainder of the year. And then next year, we may use a calendar, we may not, depending on how that goes. So probably going forward, starting now, we don't necessarily need to approve. I don't, I don't know if that's in our policy per se. I think it's more of a custom and a practice than it is an actual policy. So, Kim, are there any items, though, that you want? So, Kim, are there any items, though, that you want to call to our attention?
We just added budget resolution to 1115, and in discussion with the enrollment report. Enrollment report is a special report. It doesn't, it's not scheduled to come back again for action. So, but I know that there were a lot of discussions about editing it, and so do you want it scheduled to come back again?
Yes.
The next meeting, would we be ready for that? Yes?
We should, we should probably actually, I realize it's not a formal monitoring report, but we should probably take action to accept that. Accept it. Exactly. Bring it back with the changes we talked about, and then. No, we can. We can, but to the degree, to the, I think we've had lots of people who've questioned our enrollment report, right? And to the, to the, I think it puts Jill in a stronger position to say, the board got it, it reviewed it, and it approved it. Then it's, then there's no questions about it. Would be the way we do it. I don't know what we did last year. I could go look. Yeah, just accept the report, and whatever modifications you guys are going to make. It should be, it should be pretty perfunctory at the next meeting, because I think everybody knows what they are, the changes are. Okay. With that, yes?
I just want to note that on the 11-9 budget hearing, it's only operating. Capital's been moved to the 27th. And that, so it's just listed on capital, which is just a tech, or just a housekeeping item. And then at some point, typically, the board has orientation sessions for new board members which are scheduled in January, which I don't see on this calendar.
Right, you guys are organizing those, right?
Yes.
Well, I shouldn't say that. Let me be fair. I don't want to catch you short, Kim. I think what we said is, is that the main proposal is to follow, follow what was done prior, right? And that you guys are taking on the task of organizing. Yes, okay. Okay, any other changes? I do want to highlight to you, as you guys saw in a note to me, from me today, and I do want to actually talk about this. We will, there will be an executive session scheduled to have a discussion about potential litigation. On the, the time that the attorneys are available is on the 9th. And I am proposing a, it's a budget presentation night. As you know, budget presentation, that initial night goes pretty quickly, generally, right? Because it's not a night of a lot, too many questions. You'd say goes up for the remaining sessions. So the, the proposal is, we can do it before or after, I think, if, if we wouldn't, might stand custom. Do it before. It would be scheduled for an hour and a half, so it would be from 5:30 to 7:00 PM.
I guess the only concern with that is I don't know that we want to be time constrained. So it may make more sense to do that.
Okay. It's tough.
Oh, they get paid by the minute.
I can do 5 o'clock. Let's do 5 o'clock.
That's fine.
Fine, okay. We're going to start at 5 o'clock then. So that item will be, Kim, if you could help Mike schedule that executive session. It'll be, not of the start time committed, but the executive session of the board. So if you could follow that protocol. And it would start at 5 and at 7, and I want to, in front of the, I presume we're going to be at Costco as per normal practice. Excellent. Okay, there are no, are there any other, yes, Ms. David?
Doesn't really fit in agenda planning, but I want to close out career chat. I submitted feedback. I didn't see any others. That's fine. But I have no idea what the next step is, so. One of the things, the next step is program services. So we're going to, as part of our budget presentation on the 9th, I'm going to ask the board, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit with the programs and services, and talk about priorities. Because in my last district, we did have the board help, you know, we are, we're saying we need all of these things. We would like all of these things, otherwise it wouldn't be on the list. But help us with some of that priority setting, which, in that dialogue, I'm hoping will help provide some of that guidance and clarification. We're looking for, whether that's redesigning, whether that's adding, whether that's personal learner pathways that link to careers. And I'm hoping that will be, so the budget presentation is short, but there's a little activity that goes along with it that links to program services to say, what is really, is it worth going and following guidelines for that? So I'm hoping that, good start. That's not probably not the end of the CTE dialogue, because I know you're very interested as well, and talk to you more about it, but we will, at least let's start.
Any other business? Motion, Mr. Goodback?